This is really the first time I've seen language such as this presented. All references to access lines in quotations in Public Law 25-25 as amended by this act are changed to subscriber lines. I think that perhaps a different route would be all references to access line contained in Public Law 25-25 are hereby defined for purposes of this act. And then you just, in the following paragraph or something to that effect. Only because you're defining it for, rather than changing the word, the word will still be there unless you're going to allow the compiler of laws to be able to step in and literally go in and change all of those words. So I would prefer and I would strongly recommend, although I understand the purpose, Madam Speaker, and it's clear about what the purpose is and why they're trying to make sure that it, access lines are defined, are changed to subscriber lines, but it's really the definition and how it's presented. And this is the first time I've seen this presented in this format. So if legally it's permissible or is understandable, then I really have no concerns other than sharing what I just shared with you. I think it may be an easier approach if you just define it for purposes of Public Law 25-25 and this act.
Senators, I think we need to take a recess on this. The legislature's back in session. Senator Limtjako, you do have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, after doing a little bit more research into the public law, we realize that there really only needs to be one change of the word access to subscriber, and that's in Section 1C on line six where there's one reference to access line. So I'd like to make an amendment to change that word access to subscriber in Section 1C, line six.
On the amendment, no objections? So ordered.
Additionally, Madam Speaker, I'd like to add a new Section 3G of Public Law 25-55 that further defines subscriber lines. And so the amendment would be subscriber lines defined and would continue on to read subscriber lines are the lines that incumbent local exchange carriers use to connect to and that competitive local exchange carriers and voiceover internet protocol carriers use to interconnect to the local Guam telephone exchange.
Senator, can you clarify that the Section 3G is in Public Law 25-55?
Yes, so a new Section 3G to be added to Public Law 25-55.
Thank you. Is there anyone who would like to speak on the amendment? There being none, so ordered. Okay, thank you, Senator. Is there now anyone in the main motion who would like to speak? None, so Senator, you want to send it down or you want to close?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I just want to thank my colleagues for their contribution to Bill 140, making it a better bill. And I'd like to make an amendment, Madam Speaker, to add co-sponsors Senator Limtjako, Senator Panglinen, Senator Augen, and Senator Siniklis.
Okay, clerks, were you able to get that? On that motion, without any objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Okay, on the motion then to send 140-32 to the third reading file, without any objections? So ordered. Senator Morrison, you're recognized for Bill 141-32.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'd like to move to place Bill 144, or 141-32 to the third reading file, and I'd like to speak to it.
Is that one moment? I want to make sure it's as amended? Let me see.
As introduced.
As introduced. As introduced, okay. So, yes, and you would like to briefly speak on it?
Yes, Madam Speaker.
You may proceed.
Madam Speaker, Bill 141-33 is an act to amend subsection C of 3209 of Article 2, Chapter 3, Title 16 GCA, relative to allowing the use of ultraviolet ray filtering material on the front windshields. Madam Speaker, I also like to thank my senior colleague Senator Tom Ada for the work he has done on this issue and for graciously allowing me to introduce this version of this bill with the refinements that he suggested. I also want to thank him for being the co-sponsor of this bill. Madam Speaker, full face tinting is illegal on Guam. Many years ago, there was recognition that full face dark window tinting was a serious road safety issue, exposing pedestrians, drivers, and passengers to greater risk of car auto or auto pedestrian accidents. As a result, its use was appropriately regulated. Keeping up with innovation and technology today, there is a window film on the market that is untinted but provides energy efficient heat and UV protection. Bill 141 recognizes this new technology and allows this film to be placed full face on the front windshield because it does not compromise safety. The bill would allow full windshield film, provided that it does not tint the glass. Madam Speaker, Bill 141 is pretty straightforward. It simply amends public law to account and make room for innovation and technology without compromising the laws intent. Previously, Madam Speaker, there was mention of, should we legislate or common sense? And I know when I was speaking to some of the businesses out there that had, perform tinting windows, they, to me, I didn't think it was necessary to put this in legislation because it's really, it's a clear tint or clear film, can see right through it. But I appreciate their efforts to ensure that they're, they have the authority, or the laws that allow them to execute this type of UV film on front windshields. But, Madam Speaker, there is clearly this film that is a new type of technology. I believe it's already being used on commercial vehicles out there, but I think as far as personal use or cars, it's not, I guess, within the law to be properly full faced. I guess the term is full face, and that's kind of the thin line there that they do not want to go across, and at least to allow and clear this up and make sure that they can, or provide this product to our community. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
On the motion, Senator Tom Ada, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I guess the last time that we had actually visited the law pertaining to tinting on vehicles was back in 2008 when Public Law 29-91 was enacted. And, you know, in that short period of time since then, there's been a lot of advances in the tinting technology. And so, actually, I first saw this product at the recent conference on, the Sustainability Conference, and a vendor actually conducted a demonstration showing the difference, the heat reflecting properties of this new tint that they have, which certainly is clear. It probably lets 98% of the light through, but the heat that is allowed to go through is greatly reduced. This, of course, has a lot of benefits in that, you know, the cooling requirements in the vehicles will be reduced because now a lot of this heat is being reflected and does not cause the temperature of the vehicles to increase. Now, the tinting companies, although they know that by putting on that tint, you know, it really will not violate the intent of the law in terms of keeping that front windshield clear so that especially the law enforcement officers can see through and see who's behind the wheel there. But they've been playing it very safe and they don't want to put it on cars in the event that, and, you know, and be able, and then result in vehicle, car owners having to go and remove that tint. But notwithstanding, they've got this technology available now. But notwithstanding, they've got this technology available now, and certainly by being able to apply this tint to the cars, it has the heat shielding capability qualities to it. And for those who really do not want to screen the vehicle for visibility as to who's in the car, certainly this would allow, you know, that objective to be achieved also. So I think this is a good bill, and, you know, every little bit that can be made available to our, to the motorists out there, certainly we should make it available to them by allowing the tinting of the windshield using this material, which basically would meet the, still meet the requirements that the law enforcement officers will want. There's just one other, there's just one item, and that's on page three, line 10. Line 10 talks about the penalty, "Any person who violates this subsection shall be fined not less than $50 and no more than $250 for each separate offense." And basically, that's the fine for if somebody applies the tint to the windshield which does not meet the specifications as mentioned up there on triple I on line one through three, tinting that would allow, that will still permit a VLT of 60%. I'm not sure how you interpret that. But notwithstanding, on line 10 down there, it talks about the penalties, but we didn't say, well, where's the penalty is going to go to? And so then I would like to move to add the amendment at the end of, add the sentence at the end of line 12 to say, "Said fines shall be deposited into the Judicial Building Fund." Because I imagine that this sort of citation will go to the traffic court, get adjudicated there, and then the fines there normally go to the Judicial Building Fund. Thank you.
On the amendment, no objections? Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on the main motion? Senator, do you want to close or you want to send it down? Okay, on the motion then to send 141, Bill 141, to the third reading file, without any objections, so ordered. Good job, Senator Morrison. Senator Frank Ogun on Bill 143, you recognize?
This is Massey, Madam Speaker. But let's start this. Madam Speaker, I'd like to move for the placement or the movement of Bill Number 143-32 COR relative to extending the applicability of the waiver of driver's license fees for veterans to include all classes and endorsements to the third reading file, please.
As introduced or? As introduced?
As introduced, that's correct, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. And you would like to speak on it?
May not be necessary. I think it's pretty much self-explanatory. Unless there are any questions, Madam Speaker.
Yes, can you please briefly explain what this is? I'm going to allow you then to briefly.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and thank you to our colleagues, first and foremost, for placing this particular proposal on the agenda. As I just read the title, this would more or less provide for the extension of the waiver of the driver's license fee to include all the endorsements that are possible for the veterans. And I, this is a direct result, Madam Speaker, of the request of a good number of veterans, perhaps throwing in their personal perspective and claiming that in fact, you know, if I'm a truck driver and I'm going in to get a general operator's license, I'm given a waiver, but I'm giving, they consider it, still assess the fee for the truck drivers or the truck drivers' component. And in that case, they have requested that in fact all the other endorsements be applicable as part of this benefit, and that's where the legislation comes in. If you're looking for numbers, Madam Speaker, right now, as of the most current information, the gold plate, there are approximately 23 family members who are directly benefiting from the gold plate provision or benefit to those of the families of the fallen heroes. And then there are also 3,903 veterans who are taking advantage of the driver's license privilege and benefit that is extended on behalf of the community to the veteran community out there. So those are the numbers that have been provided thus far by the Division of Motor Vehicles, and I'm requesting consideration on the part of our colleagues to extend this to include all the endorsements. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
On the motion, Senator Tom Ada, you recognize?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Este ma posna nu guan nu kwentu se sirku pu't istine na lai ni ma popo ni. Pu'esan ni usanani ngia tu ngopo istina na poro manoi ma si bete ro nu ni poro mana dibadi i lisensya. Ilakne i amigule na ta'lu, pona'i ta'lu ma's. Pe'sgi na shoku nu ni pa bi opitati lekku. Pu'esangin un tungu hafa ma'sina ta'noi shano ngi'ofan. Shabei poponi luki edzuna na opo manoi ma's. Imi na ga'hit i lelikku i na shoku na ma dunkulu ma sacrifisa ni ani manhono man gera, ani manhono man shid bishu gi militat. Edzuna shid bishu i ma noi nu ma dingui familiya niya ma kalan mana parki nila lakniya. Pu't para ma'sina hit man libiano para ta'gosai i istina klosin nila lakni ta enjojoyi pa'uguna. Pu'es in sugawa lekuna ti mampu sisti i para ta'noi nu za'jangin tanasinya. Ra ti hiniluk ta'talo niya i gubet nu. Pu'es menas ta'noi, ta'noi todo ni siniya para poro fanina zuda mo'na. Pu'es nu usuput sisti, shatadza nu reservation gi na shoku na debili tapasa istina lai. Zuz massey.
For those of you who don't speak, you...
There are actually a few who don't understand or speak, so. On the motion, Senator Munia Barnes?
Zuz massey, Madam Speaker, and I wish in my heart that I could speak as eloquent and as good as he spoke in our Tramora native language. And I just want to say I stand and rise in support of Bill 143-32 COR. I'd like to thank the good Senator from Jonia for giving me an opportunity to be the third co-sponsor of this, but more importantly, to share the sentiments of Senator Ada that these veterans say they've sacrificed, they've served our country, they've worked really hard, and this is but a little token for all the sufferings and the protections they've done for our country and our island. And I just want to say, I hope that with this legislation, I hope that it gets passed, and I hope that the veterans will at least say, you know, we here in the 32nd Guam Legislature continue to hear their pleas, continue to hear their issues, continue to know that the legislature is here to hear them out, and we do listen. So thank you for giving me the opportunity to rise in support of this, and I thank Senator Ogun for pushing this forward.
You're welcome, Senator. Anybody else who would like to be heard, like to speak? Okay, so on the motion, so Senator Ogun, you're going to close? I want you to continue to talk about this.
Tugava, Madam Speaker. Dispenso lai, Madam Speaker, sama sangonu nu bete ro nu dan ketoda si to ma's ada, the same pi conflict of interest gi ni. Lo gua otu na ada na kwentu sin na dospo esin na ja sangak kusona ko'ko' conflict of interest sisti lekku pa'uguna na da'zan i baji da ta'prebai i baji para li hisa turan guahan. Zama papasi gi ni edzuna klosin fun pu'sko' conflict of interest edzu. Pu'es pu'ena na ba sangana pa'ugunu. Madam Speaker, I just want to close with some numbers. For the gold star plate that is given to families of our fallen heroes, I shared that there were 22 individuals at $22 a pop per benefit that adds up to about $484. Of the 3,903 veterans who are taking advantage of the driver's license benefit adds up to about $97,575. So all-inclusive, just under those two particular benefits that are extended to our veterans to the Department of Revenue and Taxation, it adds up to about $98,059. That this community is giving back to the veteran population and giving them that opportunity to avail of this particular benefit. So, Madam Speaker, I ask our colleagues to please consider supporting this legislation. I thank the good Senator Ada and Senator Munia Barnes for endorsing this. And I want to add one other individual to the co-sponsorship initially, Madam Speaker, because he helped assist and push for the increase in the budget for our Office of Veterans Affairs. And I'd like to move that Senator Mike Siniklis be added as a fourth co-sponsor of this legislation and then proceed with the motion. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
On that amendment, without any objections, so ordered. And I know, Senator, that you're not going to take advantage of this yourself, so on the motion to send 143-32 to the third reading file, so ordered. Okay, Senator Ogun? Bill Number 145-32?
This is Massey, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'd like to move for the placement of Bill Number 145-32 LS into the third reading file for consideration by the body.
And you're talking about as amended? The bill as amended, is that correct?
Yes, Madam Speaker, I apologize.
Okay, so placement of Bill 145, the third reading file, as amended by the committee, and you would like to speak on it?
Just very briefly, Madam Speaker, and that's just highlighting the title of this particular legislation. I'd like to thank the co-sponsors, Senator Morrison, Senator Ada, and also the good chair of the Oversight Committee that conducted the public hearing on this, Senator Munia Barnes, for expediting the reporting out of this particular proposal. This is Bill Number 145-32, an act relative to naming the Melesu Pier Park, the Plaza in Batalon Betaranun Mansedalon Melesu, the Melesu Veterans Sons and Daughters Pier Park in honor of and special recognition of the men and women from Melesu who have served in the United States Armed Forces and in acknowledgement of all Guam veterans. I think that's pretty much self-explanatory. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. This is Massey.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion, are there any other speakers? Senator Morrison, you recognize?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I just want to thank the author for allowing me to be a co-sponsor of this bill, and I know sometimes we think that naming parks or public facilities are trivial. And as a former director of Department of Parks and Recreation, I've been to many of these renaming of these parks that I believe it's very key to our history and our culture and our education and as we value some, what we, name basically what we value as a community and what we value as a culture. Matapung Park, Chief Kapua Park, Chief Godow, the late Angel Santos, Angel Santos Ladestone Park, the list goes on, Madam Speaker. And I just want to point out that it always begs the question when our kids or our visitors or go by the naming of these parks and what it means to us. And it just opens us up, opens up our history, opens our doors to our future generations as well. And I believe, Madam Speaker, that there's no doubt that in Guam, that we recognize and value those who have served selflessly in the armed forces. And this recognition to the people of Melesu and Guam have a large veterans populations that we should all honor as well. And also looking back at the Veterans Memorial Park that is also inhumatic as well and growing up and seeing the value behind what that park means and what it means to that community down in the southern area. So I thank the author for allowing me to be part of this, the renaming of this park. And I look forward to seeing this implemented in the community of Melesu. Thank you.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion, Senator Munia Barnes, you recognize?
Zuz massey, Madam Speaker. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak and rise in support of 145-32. I do want to share with you that in conversation of folks and residents from the Melesu Planning Council and their support for naming this park, Melesu Pier Park, on behalf of the sons and daughters of Melesu, that they think, they believe in their hearts that this pays good recognition for all those who truly represent it and truly represent it, their island in their efforts of being a part of the military armed forces. I do want to note that, if I just may ask the author of the legislation in reference to the placing of the council for the construction and the appropriate signage, would there be a funding source that would be needed for this, or will the mayor's council be responsible for working with the non-appropriate funds and the fundraisings in their efforts? Because I know that in previous legislation, it was noted when we named other parks.
Senator, do you yield to the question? If you read actually lines 10 to 14, that will give you the answer.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and thank you to the good chair of the Mayor's Council of Guam. The funding, there's a provision contained in here where in fact the mayor is going to work collectively with the community in terms of generating revenue so that they can put up the appropriate signage based on what the legislation provides. So the idea is to not absorb it internally from the mayor's office's budget, but to allow them the flexibility to go out and generate some additional revenue so that in fact they can put the signage, the new signage reflecting the name in the park. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Senator, you're satisfied with the answer?
Yes, I am.
All right, is anybody else who would like to speak on the main motion? Speaker Panglinen, you recognize?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I want to rise, of course, and say that any opportunity for this community to honor those who put their lives on the line in service to our community and our country deserves to be honored, and I think that we have done that in many different ways in this community. One of the ways that we have done it on the legislative side is, as you know, the jurisdiction for Skinner's Plaza is under the control of the legislature, and we've actually set aside property or a portion of the Skinner's Plaza to have veterans and those who serve in specific areas to put monuments out honoring service for those special groups. We have the Military Purple Heart on one corner. In another corner, soon will come a monument to those who served in the Iraqi Freedom, Desert Storm, and all of the most recent engagements of our country and our nation. And so any opportunity we've taken and we support it, I just wanted to appeal to the author on this renaming. Certainly, I think we continue to that tradition of acting positively in these efforts, but I wanted to do a little bit, a couple more research on a couple of things here that I wanted to clear in my mind and request the accommodation of the author to just, rather than moving it to third, you know, today, that we just put it aside and we'll move it to third next week, if that's something that can occur.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Ogun, to respond to...
Madam Speaker, I was expecting the good gentleman to speak in the tomorrow vernacular. Madam Speaker, I was expecting the good gentleman to speak in the tomorrow vernacular because I was going to grant him his request. But unfortunately, that wasn't the case. But in this case, only because we're dealing with Melesu and the deep south. But based on his request, I do know that he would like to conduct some additional research. And if it's okay with the members of this body, I'd like to yield to that suggestion that this legislation remain in second reading and that it be brought up for any additional discussion, if in fact there will be any, at a later date sometime next week. And then we can go, I can at that time, Madam Speaker, with your concurrence and the concurrence of the members of the body, eventually move it to third reading for consideration. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. Welcome. So then we will set 145 aside until, of course, probably Monday of next week. So, thank you, Senator. We would move then on to Bill 150. Speaker Panglinen, you recognize in Bill 150.
This is Massey, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'd like to move that Bill 150-32 COR be placed in the third reading, an act to rezone lots two and three of track 1419 located in the municipality of Dededoo from agriculture to commercial zone to be placed in third reading.
It's as introduced, right?
Correct.
Okay, okay. You may proceed, Senator.
Madam Speaker, this bill was introduced, of course, after speaking with the owners of the property and the legislative actions on prior requests for that same general area. And after consultation with the Municipal Planning Council and the Dededoo Mayor with regards to this request. Basically, Alageta Road has been developed into a wider road, more commercial traffic in that area, more commercial activity being conducted. And the owners of the property are requesting, of course, that, because of some limited resources and so forth, request that the legislature consider this. The mayor, actually, when she came to testify, had even testified at that time that she had come, just come from there, passing through there, did a drive-through, looked at the traffic pattern and the business of the streets and so forth, and testified positively on this request. And so we also had members of the Department of Public Works who have done traffic studies in the area, who had looked at other rezoning requests for A to C. And the reason why it's from A to C is because all, almost all the properties there are A anyway. So even though they're, have been, are Zone A anyway, by just from where it started in terms of that was a very rural district, and with the expansion of the roads and everything else, you had more activity occurring in that area. So this would allow then the owners of the property who would like to conduct some business activity on their property, it does not grant any variances whatsoever. So they still have to comply with all the requirements of what a commercial zone is allowed and all the zoning and setback requirements. So it doesn't grant any variance. And so if there's limitations, it will be the limitations imposed by the current code. And so I ask my colleagues, once again, we have rezoned properties in that general area to commercial zone to allow commercial activity to serve the growing neighborhoods in the area. And I ask for my colleagues' consideration and support. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Speaker Panglinen. On the motion, if anybody would like to speak on it, and for the members, is that one of the requirements is to make sure that we do have a map and there are maps attached for you to review. So nobody else wants to speak, so therefore, and, oh, okay. Senator Ogden, you recognize.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Just for the record, and obviously it's part of the committee report, but I was looking through the committee report and I noticed that the mayor, Mayor Savaris of Dededoo, had visited a site on two separate locations prior to the public hearing. And she extended her consent and her support for this particular rezoning. And it's always critical that in fact we get the mayors actively involved because they're really at the heart of each of the villages. So on that note, just to highlight her support and certainly my, I supported it prior to that, but just making sure that the public and the community understands that in conjunction with this, the mayor has certainly surveyed the lot and acknowledges his location and extends her support on this particular measure. So I stand in support of the proposal. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion, any other speakers then? Senator Limtjako, you recognize.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, you know, I struggle with the rezoning requests that come into the legislature. You know, I really do believe that this is part of the Land Use Commission to determine. And I know that the author of the bill has pointed out that the Municipal Planning Council supports it. And I believe that the mayor supports it as well. But just for the record, you know, upon reading the committee report, I do, I should point out that the GLUC does not support the rezoning. And if the author would yield to just an inquiry as to what are his thoughts on the GLUC's non-support of the zoning, it would help me determine my decision on how to vote on this bill.
Speaker Panglinen, do you yield to the question?
My thoughts on it is, you know, I can't speak for the GLUC, but I certainly have disagreed with the GLUC on many decisions that they've made from that, from the perspective of rezoning. We've had the GLUC decide that they're going to rezone property and put up, you know, a housing development with all the surrounding landowners saying, "Don't do it. It's going to impact our quality of life, water, power, infrastructure." So there are many examples in which the community differs from what the Guam Land Use Commission ultimately decides. And even when these residents go to the GLUC meeting, testify against it, they get ignored. So this is just another example, the difference between the support that this and these individuals have, express, the support of the community expressed through the mayor, expressed through the Municipal Planning Council, differs from the Guam Land Use Commission. It's not unusual that the Land Use Commission will differ with residents on their position on rezoning. And the Land Use Commission goes ahead and approves these rezoning over the objections of the community.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And I thank the author for his thoughts on it. And I understand, you know, it puts, it puts several businesses in a predicament where, you know, they're unable to take advantage of the potential zoning and the benefits that could, that come along with it. But, you know, I think therein lies the problem when we go through certain, we allow for a process to develop, and then when that, when that process is determined and they have a decision on it, we're basically kind of subvert, you know, we're going, we're overriding their authority based on, and we put a lot of people on these boards to make these, to help us ask the right questions and make the, make the appropriate decisions. And then to go, to try and change it, I just, I'm not sure that that's going to work towards a long-term planning, you know, of our master plans within the community. Because what will end up happening is, well, we'll just have several spot zones throughout the community. And I know we face this now. And one of those, you know, laws that we heard earlier in the session regarding the enforcement of the zoning laws is really going to go a long way to help enforce those that aren't operating in the right zone. But it's unfortunate that it's not going to do anything for those spot zones that are actually operating because they were spot zoned in certain areas that they may, really should have never been in there if we had a real master plan, you know. And so when we, when we go back and we look at the Land Use Commission's determination as to whether or not they should, the zoning application should be approved, you know, they're very specific in saying that the GLUC determined that infrastructure was insufficient to support both uses, particularly the potential for the anticipated increase in traffic generated by the retail store. The commission's actions ended up with an amended conditional use permit to allow business offices only. So, you know, there was some sort of compromise that at least helped these people, you know, utilize their property. And, you know, I'm a firm believer that if you own the property, you should be able to utilize it to the extent that you can. But when we go through the process of these spot, all these different spot zoning, it's really going to have an impact, you know, it's already having an impact, and it's going to continue to have an impact until we can really get our hands on a master plan to help really put businesses where businesses should be, put residences where residences should be, and not, and there's going to be some intermingling of these, you know, like co-located uses where there's commercial and residential. And, you know, in some, some aspects, like in a shopping mall area or near a restaurant, that's going to be good for the business community. But I just want to reemphasize that I'm concerned that, you know, we, you know, and I understand the author's points on this and I respect them, I just don't think that we should really be overriding the Land Use Commission and putting these spot zones throughout, throughout the island. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Mr. Senator. On the motion, any other speakers? Anyone who'd like to be heard? Okay, so Speaker Panglinen, would you like to close? Okay, so on the motion then to send Bill 150 to the third reading file without any objections, so ordered. Okay, so we're going to go to Bill 154. Senator Tina Rose Munia Barnes, you recognize.
Madam Speaker, if I may, if I can move Bill number 154-32 COR to the third, I mean, to the third reading, and if I can discuss it.
You may proceed.
This is Massey, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, Bill 154-32 COR is an act to add a new section, 7103G of Chapter 7, Title 16, Guam Code annotated. This is relative to exempting from vehicle registration requirements certain motorized utility vehicles operated by the Guam mayors in accordance with and in furtherance of their statutorily prescribed duty to oversee, coordinate, and otherwise undertake the beautification and maintenance of their village. Madam Speaker, we all know that the mayors are the 24/7 responders to all the issues and concerns that happen with their villages. It was at the request of the mayors, all of the mayors, to be able to work and have this vehicle, this certain motorized vehicle, be able to be utilized and operated within their villages. Some, some folks will call it a mule, and others will call it gators. And what the, this motorized utility vehicle does is helps in the logistical work of what the mayors do within their villages from cleaning, painting, picking up debris, transporting trash, picking up and cleaning different areas within their, within their village for beautification and maintenance. And instead of driving their, I guess their registered motor vehicles, these mules that have been utilized by the mayors has, have the mayors going from point A to point B at a more, how would you say, a maneuveral state. And they feel that this gator, or this mule, does a lot, has a lot of benefits to work with the mayors in as far as having them move and traverse within their roadways in their villages. There have been some notice, concerns about how this vehicle will be traversed on the routed roads. And the mayors have assured that even when they work with their registered vehicles, like their trucks and sports vehicles, the utility vehicles, that they always take precaution in, in making sure that they abide by the rules and regs. So this motorized utility vehicle will be very beneficial to the mayors. They've asked for it. These mules, if I'm not mistaken, don't go more than 35 miles per hour. For those who don't know what it is, the concept that you can think of in your mind is looking at a golf cart. It's a little bit bigger than a golf cart, and the engine power, I'm not so sure, it's just a little bit more than what the golf cart engine has in the golf cart. So I really hope that the, my colleagues could help support this bill with me. I want to thank Senator Brad McCready for co-sponsoring this with me, and this bill with me. And again, I want to note for the record that the mayors feel that this utility vehicle, this certain utility vehicle will be a very big asset and be very beneficial for them to utilize this vehicle within their village roads and within their village place. So thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. That wasn't more than four minutes, so thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion, if Senator McCready and then Senator Tom Ada.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And I thank the retiring speaker for allowing me to be a co-sponsor on this bill. You know, when we had the public hearing, my main reason for co-sponsoring this and supporting this bill is it's something that the mayors needed, and it's something that they asked for. I know the DPW Director, Mr. Dominguez, was also at that meeting, and he wanted to have a working relationship with the mayors so that there would be no problems when this law, or if this law passed and was instituted. So I, I thought this was a good way to facilitate for the mayors, to help them with, with taking care of their villages. And, you know, looking at the bill as it's introduced, it does just that. So I thank the, the sponsor of this piece of legislation, and I, and I thank you, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity to speak on it. Thank you.
You're welcome. Senator Tom Ada, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise in support of the bill, and I recognize that the village mayors certainly have a lot of work in the villages, beautifying it and keeping the place wholesome, and many other things that they do. However, I do have one concern, and that is... And that is... Excuse me, I lost my train.
I'm sorry, I know, I didn't mean to do that. I, that was my fault, because I sent you a note, yeah.
At any rate, I, the concern that I have, of course, is that, you know, seeing these slow-moving vehicles on your main highways. So let's say then the, the mayor of Baragada is going to lend his mule to the mayor of Chalampago. So you're going to have this slow-moving vehicle on the main highway traveling down from Baragada to Chalampago. So I think the way that we may be able to address that concern is on page two, line 14, I would like to insert the, an amendment so that it reads, subpar paragraph G, "Operating a motorized utility vehicle on non-routed roads." So if they're only operating then on the roads within the villages, then, then fine. You don't need to register that utility vehicle. But you cannot be taking that utility vehicle and running it up and down on Route 10 or Route 8. That certainly would be, will result in impeding traffic.
But they get a license.
And so that's the amendment I would like to make. Somebody handed me a note, and I think I would need to take a look at that to see what's the additional suggested amendments. But that's... But that's my amendment, is that on line 14, it would read, "Operating a motorized utility vehicle on non-routed roads."
Yes, Senator, thank you. So on the amendment, Senator Munya Barnes.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And though I really, really appreciate that amendment and I really didn't have an objection before that, when this was, when that was discussed in the public hearing, one of the concerns that was brought up, there's some of the, I guess, the main streets in some of the villages, there's no other road but the routed road, like the villages in the south. And to get from the Humadic Mayor's office, as an example, to get from one place, from the office, to go into one of the subdivisions, there's no other way than to traverse that road. Now I know that, it's just like, I do know and I want to share that they have excavators and backhoes and all that that don't go more than 20 miles an hour. But there's a timeline that those roads could be traversed on the road. And that's probably an opportunity that we can look at. And I know that's not what he wants to hear. But that was brought up in the public hearing, I mean, in discussion with the mayors. And he said, "Yeah, but what about us mayors where we only have one road? I mean, one access in and out." So...
But the unregistered, it says your unregistered motorized utility vehicle. So are backhoes, do backhoes have registration plates?
Well, yeah, it's under a different provision, yeah, that's what I'm saying. Just like mopeds and all that, if you're under 50 cc, you don't need to register, but it can still be on the road.
Can we take a brief recess? There's so many conversations going on.